Our first quarter of business this evening is a public hearing. McFarland High School pursuant to Wisconsin statute 118.381B regarding submission of a flexibility waiver request to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to waive the educator effectiveness requirement set forth in Wisconsin statute 120.122M for the 2021- 2021- 2022 school year due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. As part of the public hearing, the board will review written or recorded comments from members of the public regarding the request for the waiver before discussing and taking action regarding the request for a waiver.
And just to let the public and everyone know that's listening what we are requesting is that we're not doing with the evaluation system, but we are looking to do away with this section that's called SLOs. And those are specific learning objectives that basically are an increase of paperwork that go along with the educator effectiveness program. And we are going to be asking the Department of Public Instruction to grant us a waiver so that our staff doesn't have to do the written paperwork associated with the SLO portion of the educator effectiveness. We'll still do, there'll still be evaluations, we'll still be working with staff members. But we're asking for a waiver of that component to DPI. So depending on how the turning of the public hearing and depending on the motion of the board, if the board does make that motion, we will apply the proper paperwork and the Department of Public Construction is still one who decides. What we are asking for is the board's permission to complete the waiver process.
Okay. Any discussion here in the room?
And I think Angie said there were no written comments, so no one has submitted anything from the public prior to this?
Okay.
Is there anybody out there who wants any comment, Angie?
No.
Okay, in that case then.
You can just close the public hearing once you think there's no more discussion.
Yes, okay. Hearing no discussion, the public hearing will be closed. And at this point.
Then you can take action.
Yep. I move to authorize the administration to request a waiver of the educator effectiveness requirement set forth in Wisconsin statute 120.122M for the 2021- 2022 school year due to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bruce. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. So moving on, we have consent agenda items. We've got minutes of the November 1st, 2021 school board meeting. Some general fund vouchers and purchasing card transactions. Request approval of general fund vouchers number 176629 through 176762 and 291411 through 291445. And purchasing card transactions dated 9/21/21 through 10/2/21. We have some professional staffing recommendations, some co-curricular staffing recommendations, and some personnel some personnel items unnecessary for vote. Do I have a motion to approve the co-curricular staffing and professional staffing recommendations?
I so do.
A second?
A second.
Kate? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. And again, we have some personnel items, no vote necessary. We'll move on to public comments. We have multiple public comments tonight. So we will start with, Bruce? You can give it a start.
Sure. I'm going to start with Amy Babila and Clyde Drake. Address is Main Street. Subject is keep the mask masking mandate in all schools. Please take the health and safety of all our district students, staff, families into consideration and continue requiring masks of everyone in our schools. The CDC, CDC's guidance, which was updated on November 5th, states that "Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students age two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. It is wonderful that vaccines are now available for students down to age five. However, that does not change the fact that cases are still spreading among the vaccinated and unvaccinated population." In Dane County, according to the public health Madison and Dane County dashboard and the CDC dashboard, COVID-19 cases have increased by 30% over the last week. After a brief dip in October, cases have been trending upwards again as we head into winter where we'll all be spending more time indoors and more time gathering with family over the holidays. We all agree that masks are an inconvenience and students don't like to wear them. Children also don't like to wear shoes, jackets, and hats. They don't like to slow down to wash their hands and learning to take turns is a skill we have to teach them. But we teach them to do these things for their health and safety and for the health of others as part of living in a community. Wearing masks while our community is in high transmission of a severe respiratory disease is also something we need to do for everyone's safety. The success of universal masking has proved, has been proven in statistics from communities where masking was not required and schools were sent into virtual learning this fall along with classrooms of students being required to quarantine and large numbers of six stu- along with classrooms of students being required to quarantine and large numbers of six stu- and large numbers of six students and staff. According to a national public radio story, studies show that even in situations where other measure, measures aren't being used, masking makes a big difference in keeping the virus from spreading. That one conclusion of the ABC, that was one conclusion of the ABC Science Collaborative, a major research initiative involving nearly 1 million students from 100 school districts and 14 charter schools in North Carolina. It found that universal masking policies help keep transmission rates of the coronavirus within schools to under 1% last fall and spring. Monona Grove School District announced to families on Friday that they are request, are requiring masks in the school, in the school buildings through the end of the year and will reassess around January 10th. I urge you to adopt a similar policy and continue the mask mandate for everyone in our school buildings. Our students have had enough disruptions to their learning over this pandemic. Let's keep them all safe, those who are vulnerable and those who are strong and healthy, and keep them in school by keeping masks on, everyone, until the level of community transmission has dropped to low, according to Public Health Madison Dane County, and the threat has passed. Thank you all for, thank you for all you do for our children, our schools, Amy Babala and Clyde Drake. The next one is from Melissa Carr, 4614 Bellinggrass Street. To whom it may concern, I am writing to urge you to keep universal masking for students and staff in the McFarland School District. K-12 universal masking is recommended by all health, major health organizations, including the CDC, AAP, Public Health Madison Dane County, and Wisconsin DHS. COVID mitigation requires a layered approach, no single mitigation method, it will be 100%. This has been readily apparent, McFarland's K-5 classes where lack of classroom spacing while masked and no spacing while unmasked at lunch has led to in-school COVID spread and over 100 kids in quarantine over this span of a few weeks. This has caused entire families in McFarland to get sick with COVID and has caused major disruptions in learning for dozens of children. While it's absolutely wonderful that kids are getting vaccinated now, children ages five through 11 will not be fully protected at the end of November when the PHMDC mask mandate expires. The earliest that these kids will have full protection would be in mid to late December. Some parents are unable to get kids in for their vaccination right away due to schedules or current positive tests or quarantines. Other parents I've spoken to are preferring low vaccination rates at IMMS and MHS. We cannot expect high rates of vaccination at CEPS and WIS. While any number of vaccinations is welcome, a percentage of vaccinated kids that is similar to IMMS and MHS will not be enough to stop spread as is now happening in the Connerdell Vium and the Wobbes Intermediate School, especially with physical distance not being employed or students in these schools. In addition, it's highly likely that these outbreaks will continue to occur or possibly increase as McFarland is still holding indoor team sports and other activities, field trips, meetings, et cetera. Holiday gatherings are coming soon and more people are just, are just generally moving indoors as the weather changes. My children are currently learning at home with Weaver, but we have hoped, we had hoped to send them back to McFarland schools once they are fully vaccinated. If students and staff aren't masking, this would likely be, not be possible for our family. Removing universal masking would undoubtedly lead to a continued large number of student and staff illnesses and quarantines, especially for K-5 students. This will be detrimental to the health of our kids and our community and will cause even more disruption to their learning. Please continue universal masking throughout the district. Sincerely, Melissa Carr. The next one is from Angela Straub, 6080 Shooting Star Court. It's not. Oh, okay, sorry, forgive me, I'm looking at the top, sorry. Angela who?
Ilyas, I believe.
Oh, okay, yes, all right, I, sorry, Ilyas, okay. Forgive me about that, Angela. I think that would be a huge disservice to all staff and students to lift the mask mandate at this point. Being a staff member, I have seen how much the masks have helped students, families, and staff feel comfortable going about school without distancing. It is keeping kids healthy. We are about to come into the virus heavy winter months in which masks can help alleviate some of the illnesses that can keep kids out of school. At the younger level, they're used to the, they are used to the expectation that everyone wears a mask, as mask optional does not work for the youngest school-aged children. This in turn makes all the children at Connerdell Vium Primary School at risk for getting more sick than they need to be, need to because even unvaccinated adults and children will have a mask optional mentality. It just seems very careless to lift the mask at this point in that pandemic. I think this should be something that is considered in March when winter is nearing an end and more people have opportunities to get vaccinated and get over the peak of respiratory illnesses. Please consider how lifting the mask would change the morale in our schools. I know we are all tired of this and wish for life without masks and without fear of exposure, but it has gotten us this far and it has little more that it needs to take us as a community looking for, out for our children. The next one is from Mary Jo Froden, 6214 Wildflower Court, McFarland. First, let me express my gratitude to the board for all they have done during extremely difficult times. I know that decisions are not made lightly and that you have to balance the wants and needs of many different people. I'm writing to express my deep concerns about eliminating the mask requirements for all students and staff at Connerdell Vium Primary School. Cases are going up all over our state, including in Dane County. People will be traveling, gathering for the holidays, which could potentially create a spike in cases in January. Without masks, we are all considered close contacts, so one positive case will result in entire classrooms having to quarantine and teachers will have to teach virtually, which is less than ideal with older students and a complete disaster for our youngest learners and their families. Masks and other protocols have prevented spread within our school. Why would we put this at risk now? Kids are in school full-time, they are largely remaining healthy, they are with their friends, learning, playing, socializing, et cetera. Removing the mask mandate too soon puts all of that at risk. Universal masking should remain in place until the cold flu season is over and COVID cases are going drastically down. At a minimum, we should wait until the start of the third quarter, but in my opinion, the start of the fourth quarter would be an even better time, consider removing masks, but only if conditions in the state and/or county warrant it. And regardless of when masks become optional for the fully vaccinated, those who are unvaccinated should continue to wear masks. Thank for your time and for all you do.
All right. The next public comment is from Jenny Goodland. I am extremely disappointed that the school district is considering removing the masking requirements for the district. It makes no sense to lift the masking requirements on the days children return to school after the Thanksgiving and winter breaks from school. After the surge of cases that were seen last year during the same timeframe, I think it is irresponsible for the district to lift the masking requirements. I think the earliest the district should consider changing the masking policies should be the beginning of the second semester, several weeks after winter break. I would also like to know what the current vaccination rate among students is at all of the schools. Thank you for your time. Jenny Goodland, MHS parents. The next one comes from Erin Lompado. Thanks for your time today. I'm writing to share my position on masks. We should be requiring masks for the remainder of the 2122 school year or until the level of community transmission is in the low range, whichever comes first. Currently, we are still at a high level of community transmission, according to the Public Health of Madison and Dane County Department. We also have a sub shortage, so we cannot afford to have more teachers out sick with no subs to cover their classrooms. Please continue to require masks in our school. It is less intrusive to normalcy to wear masks compared to increased teacher and student absences due to increased cases and exposure in our schools. The next comment is from Amy Lawrence. As a parent of a high school student, I believe November 27th is too soon to make face masks optional in the high school. I have been wearing a face mask nearly full-time at work since April 2020, so I fully understand the inconvenience they present and the desire to get back to normal. Unfortunately, the transmission level in McFarland, Dane County, and Wisconsin are all currently higher than when we began this school year. The Public Health and Medical Experts at the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics both continue to recommend universal masking in K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Many high school students also have siblings in the 5-11 age group who would not be fully vaccinated until at least mid, mid-December. Studies continue to show the effectiveness of masks in a limiting, in limiting spread in schools, especially when everyone is wearing them. It seems logical to continue to follow expert guidance and at least wait until the transmission rate in McFarland and/or Dane County is consistently below the high designation. Our current universal mask policy has likely helped us keep students learning in the classroom as much as possible. This should continue to be our top priority until transmission rates fall. And the next comment comes from Molly Nave. I am very concerned with the possibility of lifting mandatory masks in our school before we have an idea of how many children will be vaccinated. This is fresh off of my son being identified as a close contact and requiring quarantine while masked only two months into the school year. This feels premature as we are seeing that the vaccination rates for kids who have been eligible hasn't been stellar to date. Please do not put our kids at risk until more is known about the numbers of kids in the buildings who are vaccinated and until we see a reduction in the cases and need to quarantine with our current mitigation efforts.
The next one is from Rachel Nelson, 5403 Amy Road. Hello, I wanted to write a quick email in response to Dr. Anderson's recommendation regarding masks. When making the decision about if and when to stop requiring masks in the schools, please follow the CDC guidelines rather than the county mask mandates. Thank you, Rachel Nelson. The next one is from Rebecca Piazza, 6110 Spring Pond Court. Hello, I wanted to speak to the board about continuing to advocate for our children, teachers, and staff during this pandemic. I am grateful for the McFarland School District's current safety measures, which include mask wearing indoors. I strongly encourage continued use of masks during this pandemic. I have two children who attend CEPS. I work for UW Health as a physical therapist. I've worked directly with patients during this pandemic. I provide a safe environment for myself, my coworkers, and my patients by wearing a mask. CEPS teaches the students to be safe, kind, responsible. Wearing a mask meets the standard. Safe due to the highly contagious Delta variant, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students ages two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Kind, I feel very strongly that all students, staff, and families should be safe at school and encourage the ongoing use of masks. Six in 10 adults in the U.S. has a chronic disease. Having a mask optional choice is not providing a safe environment for individuals who may be more susceptible to illness. Responsible, I am very proud of our children who have showed resilience and ease with mask wearing. We have worked so hard to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe during this pandemic. We need to stay strong and united. An easy way to do this is by wearing masks. The pandemic is not over. We have a responsibility to continue to use safety measures that are effective. Please continue your high standards at the McFarland schools. Respectfully, Rebecca Piazza. The next one is by Elizabeth Riser-Lober, 5060 Frost Aster Court. Good evening, it would appear that the thought to continue masks was completely ignored within the decision-making process of the administration. The only two options are no mask or optional masks within the survey. Why is that? The honor system does not work. The CDC's little experiment proved that already. Why do this with our community's children? The rate of transmission, the number, numbers within the community are already higher than they were last year at this time. Plenty of families are choosing not to vaccinate their children yet. Children are the carriers of COVID, yet even more are dying. One should think all the cases within the schools, especially in Florida, have proved this point. The schools must believe there are special circumstances time and time again if there is no spread within the school system as the story continues to go. How miraculous. Either way, masks decrease the community spread. It's called a multi-layered approach for a reason. Masks, vaccinations, distancing, hand washing, et cetera, the more layers there are, the better the protection. The schools will soon have little to no mitigation strategy. Why not take a common sense approach and do this once the numbers go down? Why not wait until the community spread is in the green again? It is sure as heck isn't going to be right after the holidays. Right now, there's what, 58 kids in quarantine, 10 staff members sick, 19 cases in one week? There was a need for 63 substitute staff members. Wow, how many additional kids and staff are out sick or not feeling well? Those numbers do not even indicate the sick kids. Do you assume we don't talk to one another? There are classes where there are six kids in the classroom. Why would I send my kid back to that environment? That is horrible. There is no consistency and no set schedule if there are constant sick days and inevitable quarantine. We already know you're going to route, going to go the route of least resistance. Clearly, the anti-mask crowd is the loudest. Apparently, you're all scared of them or something since you bow down to their demands. How do teachers feel about this? Bus drivers, staff, parents of kids that are immunocompromised? Your job is to protect all kids within public education, not just the majority. If parents want something else, they have the option to go elsewhere. We never thought the side of scientific reason would be the side where we must go elsewhere. How disappointing, Dr. Riser. The next one is from Lisa Shalay, 6675 Highland Drive, Windsor. Dear McFarland School Board, I am writing this letter in support of keeping the current mask policy. The American Academy of Pediatrics website currently states that fully vaccinated individuals can become infected and transmit the virus to others. Therefore, universal masking is needed to protect unvaccinated and otherwise vulnerable community members. We know that vaccinated individuals are able to catch and transmit the Delta variant of COVID. There are immunocompromised students and staff that benefit from the extra protection of masks as well as any families that have children under the age of five that have not yet been able to be vaccinated. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Eileen Swan, 1418 Delaware Boulevard, Madison. My family and I strongly object to the recommendation for a mask optional policy. I teach in the district and my children attend here as well. With the numbers on the rise in Dane County as well as the fact that people will be spending more time indoors over the next few months, now is not the time to abandon the mask mandate policy. The CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students ages two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Let science and common sense prevail and reinstate the mask mandate policy until the CDC recommends otherwise. We all want our students and teachers to be in school, as that is what is best for the kids and for their learning. Thank you, Eileen Swan.
The next one is Cory Vanderkleb, Keith, sorry, 5409 Normal Road. Dear McFarland School Board and Administration, I am writing today in response to the survey sent out about the upcoming discussion about masks in our schools. I did not respond to the survey as I didn't feel that the wording was clear. I am strongly opposed to masks being optional. I feel that making masks optional after many families have been traveling for Thanksgiving and Christmas does not make sense at all and is not in the best interest of students and school staff. Science continues to show that a layered approach is best. If masks are made optional, what layers are being used to keep our students and staff safe? Vaccinations and masks have a much greater chance of reducing outbreaks within our schools. I do not feel that adding vaccinations and not everyone being vaccinated, and not everyone will be vaccinated, and taking away the mask requirements is the safest option. Health agencies are continuing to strongly recommend masking in schools. Why is this not being considered and listened to? It is real, it really feels like making masks optional is taking a big risk with our students and staff at this point. There are still significant number in our school community who are not vaccinated. Masks need to continue to be required in our schools for the safety of every single person. Please think of the high-risk staff members or, think of the high-risk staff members or students. It is the school board and administration's job to do everything possible to keep every staff member and student safe. Making masks optional, optional does not do that. Please make the choice that will allow all students to be safe at school. Thank you for your time and consideration. Cory Vanderkeef, Keith, parent of a child at MMS. The next one is Lee Ann Waricek. Dear McFarland School District Board Members, I am writing to you to voice my strong opposition to Dr. Anderson's recommendation for moving to a mask optional policy starting November 28th, 2021 for staff and students at the high school and on January 3rd, 2022 for staff and students attending CEPS, Connerdell Vium and Primary School, the Wobbes Intermediate School, and the Indian Mall Middle School. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention provides- The Center for Disease Control and Prevention provides very clear guidelines and recommendations for K-12 schools to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. One of the recommendations is the following: Due to the circulating highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students ages two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. This quote was taken from the CDC website updated on November 5th, 2021, which is one day after CDC recommended COVID-19 vaccinations for five through eleven-year-olds. I am a healthcare provider and have been working during this entire pandemic. I was providing care to patients before we had the COVID-19 vaccine, and the only way we had to protect ourselves and our patients was through personal protective equipment, which was face masks and face shields. I have received the COVID-19 vaccine and booster. In fact, the healthcare organization where I provide patient care has a COVID-19 vaccine requirement for all employees and contract staff, giving exemption for medical and religious reasons. Despite the vaccine requirement, all employees and contract staff are required to mask, and those providing direct patient care must wear eye protection as well. The organization requires all patients, family members, and visitors to mask regardless of vaccination status. This is the health, safety, and well-being of all who enter the facility and the community at large. If this is required for a healthcare facility, which does not nearly have the large number of staffs, teachers, and students, why would we not require this for our schools? I feel we have had a successful school year thus far. McFarland School District has effective COVID-19 policies in place, which has done a great job mitigating the spread of this virus, allowing our schools to remain open. A huge driving factor for this has been universal masking. Let's continue our successful school year, allowing students to continue in-person learning, which means universal masking needs to remain for all staff, teachers, and students. And my last one is Leah Xana, 631 Sledding Parkway. She writes, I strongly believe we need to continue with the mask mandate. I feel to keep our kids in school, we need to keep them masked. This is proved, this has proven to be working. I, kids are sneezing and coughing at each other, especially during the winter months. There could be lots of kids missing school.
Okay, moving on. The next comment is from Amy Crowe, 5927 Oak Hall Drive. Please read this aloud at the next school board meeting. I wanted to express my support for the recommendation that masks be optional for our students and staff after the Dane County mandate is lifted. My suggestion is that all grades would be mask optional following November 29th. The whole point of masks optional is that if you still would like to wear a mask, you can. If you would not like to wear a mask, you can choose not to wear a mask. The majority of the students and staff are vaccinated, so a masks, masks optional option makes complete sense. We need to start putting our kids first and not the people who remain scared about this virus. If you are scared of COVID, wear a mask. You don't have the right to tell other people what to do. I feel that certain members of the school board would rather dig their heels in and be right about COVID instead of looking out for the well-being of our students. We are sending our kids very mixed messages. They don't have to wear masks for away games, but must wear them at home games. They can play in the state tournament in Green Bay without a mask, but must wear one walking in our halls. They can sit down at a restaurant and not have to wear a mask, but they have to wear a mask in class. There's no logic to this. There was not a COVID outbreak after the state tournament, just like there hasn't been a COVID outbreak after every away game. Wanakee and Belleville have already voted that masks are optional in their schools after the Dane County mandate is lifted. We have the choice in McFarland to decide that masks are optional. We get to decide. I would suggest that as we move into the winter sports season, that students do not have to wear masks while they play sports. I would also suggest that the board members run for forty-five minutes to an hour with a mask on and see how they feel during and after. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. Wearing masks has been proven to not be good for our students' health and mental health, and it needs to stop. Enough is enough. Our students have complied with everything you have asked of them. It's time we start standing up for them and putting them first. Again, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. No one is saying you can't wear a mask anymore. I also find it ironic that we have switched the student population that we are the most scared of getting COVID from. Last year, we were the most afraid of the high school population, having them return to school after the younger kids. Now we are putting the most restrictions on the young school population. This goes to show the illogical decision-making that is going on concerning our kids and COVID. I applaud our superintendent for taking the initiative and sending out a survey of the families of he is asking our opinion. I would hope the school board members would take this survey into consideration, even if the results don't coincide with your position. Thank you, Amy Crowe. Next is Jeff Crowe, same address. Once the Dane County mask mandate is lifted on November 27th, masking should be optional for all kids in McFarland schools. It is ridiculous that we are even debating this. You have already taken way too much from our kids, and you should be begging them to forgive you and do everything in your power to try to make it right. This would be a good way to start that healing process. Once the mask mandate is lifted on November 27th, do the right thing and make masks optional for all kids. As many of us advocate for, in the pro-choice movement, keep your laws off my body. Similar can be said in this case. Keep your laws off our kids' bodies. America is about choice. Quit teaching our kids that they are dangerous to be around by making them wear masks when they've done everything you've asked and been nothing but cooperative. Instead, let them know that you are in their corner. You understand how difficult this has been for them, and you are now making decisions that will only help the healing process begin. But you are committed to making up for lost time and giving them every opportunity to feel good about themselves and succeed in our schools. Next comment comes from Trish Fortune, 5987 Prairie Wood Drive. My name is Trish Fortune, and I am a physical education and health teacher at the high school. I am also on the coaching staff and am a parent of a senior and a sixth grader. I am writing to the board today to request that our school district, or at least IMS and MHS, have optional masking, not mandated when our current order expires at the end of the month. Our vaccination rate is at least eighty-two percent, and by all means, if teachers and students want to wear masks, that is completely acceptable and respected. But we should not be mandated to wear masks, especially if we are vaccinated. It is hard to communicate and breathe in the masks amongst many other things. We have the ability to distance and be safe without masking in our school areas. I believe we should go along with the rest of Dane County at the end of the month when the mask mandate order expires and not be mandated to wear masks. It is time. Thank you. Respectfully, Trish Fortune. Next, we have Candace Pennecan at 6110 Patterson Court. Hello. In my opinion, the survey sent out does not accurately capture my response regarding masking, so I'll give it here. I support optional masking for all students effective November 27th. In addition, the district's contact tracing and close-contact quarantine policy should also be removed. The time and effort for staff and the disruption in learning is too great to continue this. I also firmly believe that school board meetings are a community event, and not allowing in-person conversation and listening is a disservice to all of us. Thank you, Candace Pennecan. Next is Casey Ray, 1671 Bonner Trail. To whom it may concern, I ask that you put aside your personal feelings in regards to the debate over mask utilization in schools. The county is lifting the mandate, and the recommendation put forward by Dr. Anderson is mask optional. This should be allowed for all students regardless of vaccination status or age. Give us the option to make choices for our families. Let your employees and students have the option to continue to wear a mask or not. Next is from Tom and Jane Sandin, 2248 County Road AB. McFarland School Board, we are writing to urge you to remove the mask requirement at all schools. Make masks optional for all. Be a leader among area school districts like Wanakee and Belleville in eliminating this mandate. Pictures of our volleyball team at State and Green Bay highlight our board's mask policies, which are not rooted in science. Our policy states that we follow the masking requirements of schools we visit. Our many parents, fans, and volleyball athletes were able to attend this very large event indoors without masks and then return a few days later to McFarland School. By having this conflict, the board is essentially admitting that the mask requirements here are, is based on politics and not science. I hope you also realize that your mask survey results for teachers and parents will likely be flawed. The survey allows manipulation with allowing multiple votes. McFarland's faulty survey was highlighted for all, fourteen hundred members on the open Dane County public and private schools, Facebook page two days ago. Thank you, Jane and Tom Sandin. Okay, moving along, we've got, I think I have one more here. The name is Kristen Jacobowski, 5201 Falling Leaves Lane. Hi, I am writing to express our family's views in COVID protocols post-vaccination for our kindergartner and second grader. We are grateful that vaccines have been approved for the five-to-eleven-year-old age group and intend to vaccinate our children who are eligible. We believe that the vaccines are safe and effective against COVID-19 and that this is the way for us to both keep our children safe and move closer to normal in our world. My husband and I would like to know if there is a plan to change the current COVID protocols related to quarantining, testing, and contact tracing once our children have completed their vaccination series. We would like to be able to handle things the way they are currently handled with the older age group, as well as adults in Dane County who are fully vaccinated. Meaning, we monitor for symptoms if our children are close contact but do not have to quarantine them. Of course, if a child develops symptoms or tests positive, we would keep them home. One of our biggest motivators for vaccinating them is that, is that so they can attend school normally with their peers and not have their social lives and education interrupted multiple times. We would be fully comfortable with changing the protocols to reflect this. Thank you for your time. We feel it is important for the board to have an accurate picture of what our opinions as parents are in this matter. And now I believe we have a recorded comment.
Yes, I would like to, if you do not mind, I would like to invite, we do have two individuals who have registered due to Q&amp;A feature currently, and then I would like to put out an offer to anyone, anyone, any other attendees. If you'd like to make a public appearance by speaking to the board, please utilize the Q&amp;A portion found at the bottom of your Zoom window. In the Q&amp;A, we would ask that you type your name, address, subject of interest, and whether you have discussed this item prior to the meeting with either a district, the district administrator, or President Howery. After submitting the information, I would transfer each individual over to speak to the board. Okay? And then now I will share my screen and present a video comment from John Gazer at 6413 Exchange Street. Just one moment.
And I wanted to offer a brief public comment setting aside actually some discussion on COVID mitigation issues. I came to speak to trust, accountability transparency. I'm also a black guy on the other side. I speak to myself. I can't affect the community that I'm in. Angie?
The front row of the district has lost Angie Trust with Lizzo, my wife, and our family. And I also feel the vulnerability and transparency over the last year. I've come to light, Casey points.
I'm going to pause this. We are having some issues with the internal volume. Give me one moment. I'm going to stop the share and see if I increase the volume of my computer, if that will work better.
Could you start again?
Yeah.
Yes, definitely. Okay.
And I wanted to offer a comment setting aside actually some discussion on COVID mitigation issues. I came to speak to trust, accountability transparency. I'm also a black guy on the other side. I speak to myself. I can't affect the community that I'm in. Angie?
The front row of the district has lost Angie Trust with Lizzo, my wife, and our family. And I also feel the vulnerability and transparency over the last year. I've come to light, Casey points.
Looking back, six days, we've never acted in age. Superintendent Dell, at that point, he had committed to take smaller comments, more letters that were written to the administration, even to PHDC, and bring them to the Friday discussions that he and other Dane County superintendents engaged in. We, whatever, that did not happen. More recently, asking for the public records request, open records request, but notes to the same meeting I just detailed previously, we posed those questions and asked our administration from public schools to provide notes to those Friday meetings. Initially, so those records did not exist. However, we knew they did. We provided a website link detailing an electronic Google document to the notes from that meeting. We provided screenshots detailing Superintendent Dell had been actively editing that document. Providing that, Superintendent Anderson was able to locate the notes, and then a week later, we'd ask for the status of that public records request. Informed that the notes were printed and put in the mail last Wednesday. So today, we get to receive those notes. I'm not sure what they might contain. Or just a couple of examples of, like, trust perhaps, or I guess we're supposed for somebody to help me understand how an experience like this would, would help build the trust with myself, with other stakeholders in the community. So I'll comment that I care a lot as a parent of a couple of children and a stakeholder in the community, a taxpayer in McFarland as well. I want to see McFarland Public Schools succeed and excel. It's with that in mind that I make my comments today, and I hope that we're able to improve upon some of the relationships. Again, speaking for myself today, I anticipate there are others that share some of my thoughts, some of my feelings. I'm a proud graduate of many public schools, including four degrees in Wisconsin, Madison, a couple of master's degrees, and a PhD. So I want to be part of a community in public schools that excel and succeed. However, I feel so strongly, my wife and I, that the questions, hopefully, have not been answered, and then to maybe help some of the issues to trust our personal strength, hold our kids out of the school district this year. So that's not to say that we won't come back in the future, however, the experience as I open, the engagement with our children at the new school has been fantastic. So I, I hope that I can build back some of the trust, but I wanted to make these comments highlighting some opportunities we have, hopefully, for future engagement within the community, and also make my thoughts known so that others can hopefully pick up on some of those discussions, perhaps pose some questions within the district as well, where it goes also. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I believe that concludes the public presentation.
No, we actually have two individuals. Excuse me, let me turn the speaker back down in my computer. All right, we have, we have two individuals who have registered.
Thank you.
Okay, we have. At this point, I will...
Looking back, six days ago, we never acted engaged with Superintendent Dell. At that point, he had committed to take smaller comments, more letters that were written to the administration, even to the H M C, and bring them to the Friday discussions that he and other Dane County superintendents engaged in. We learned that did not happen more recently, asking for the public records request, open records request, but notes to the same meeting I just detailed previously. Proposals, questions, and asked administration from public schools to provide notes to those Friday meetings. Initially, so those records did not exist. However, we knew they did. We provided a website link detailing an electronic Google document to the notes from that meeting. And we provided screenshots detailing Superintendent Dell had been actively editing that document. Providing that, Superintendent Anderson was able to locate the notes. And then a week later, when I had asked for the status of that public records request, informed that the notes were printed and put in the mail last Wednesday. So today, we get to receive those notes. I'm not sure what they might contain. However, just a couple of examples of, like, trust perhaps, or I guess it's good for somebody to help me understand how an experience like this would, would help build the trust with myself, with other stakeholders in the community. So I'll comment that I care a lot as a parent of a couple of children and stakeholder in the community, a taxpayer in McFarland as well. I want to see McFarland Public Schools succeed and excel. It's with that in mind that I make my comments today. And I hope that we're able to improve upon some of the relationships. Again, speaking for myself today, I anticipate there are others that share some of my thoughts, some of my feelings. I'm a proud graduate of many public schools, including four degrees in Wisconsin, Madison, a couple master's degrees, and a PhD. So I want to be part of a community in public schools that excel and succeed. However, I feel so strongly, my wife and I, that the question, hopefully been cold and not been answered, and then to maybe tell some of the issues with trust, our personal strength, with our kids, how does schools do this year? So that's not to say that we want to come back in the future, however, the experience is I have been engaging with our children at the preschool has been fantastic. So I, I hope that I can build back some of the trust. But I wanted to make these comments highlighting some opportunities we have, hopefully for future engagement within the community, and also make my thoughts known so that others can hopefully pick up on some of those discussions, perhaps pose some questions within the district as well, where it goes. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I believe that concludes the public presentation.
No, we actually have two individuals. Excuse me, let me turn the speaker back down in my computer. All right, we have, we have two individuals who have registered.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, at this point, I will move, we have Sandra Shane, who would like to make a public comment on masking at 2806 Union Street. I will be moving Sandra over into, as a panelist. Can we have one moment? All right. Sandra has now been, should now be joining shortly. There we go.
Hello, everyone, and thanks for sharing your screen. I would like to share my presentation on masks. Why should school districts should maintain masks in school? Um, first, I would like to thank you for having me and listening. And, um, uh, school board members, please know that I shared this presentation with you because there are links to the science that if you wanted to spend some time looking at, you're welcome to. Um, so, uh, first, we were given five options for masking. The first three really have to do with a mask recommended setting or an optional mask setting, and it really, the dates are changed. Oh, first off, I am a teacher at, um, I am a mess. Uh, I'm an art teacher there and have been for, um, some time now. So the mask recommendation setting, either for November 29th, which would be right after fall break, or, um, right after January 3rd, right after winter break, or the third one, which would be at the beginning of second semester, we would go to masks optional for fully vaccinated people. Um, the fourth option was to, that we were given was to recommend, uh, uh, mask recommendation setting for fully vaccinated folks, once Dane County Public Health recommended. And finally, the last one was to continue a mandate for all students regardless of vaccination until the end of the school year. Um, and my, um, recommendation is actually that we reassess sometime at the start of maybe first, uh, second, second term, maybe even third term. I don't think we have enough data yet. Um, and I've got some information I'd like to share with you. So, um, is mask wearing important? So the CDC says when you wear a mask, you protect, um, you protect others as well as yourself, as yourself. Masks work best when everyone wears one. Um, and I have a link to the site and to the science of that. Particularly important is that it's, um, it's more important for people who have COVID to not to wear a mask so they don't spread. So you're wearing a mask protects you less than others wearing masks. And it works better if everyone wears one. So, um, I'm sorry, my, uh, presentation here is, uh, oh, I went to a link. I'm really sorry. Hold on a second. Um, bear with me here. All these things are in the wrong spot. Here we go. Sorry about that. Um, so is mask wearing important? Uh, we just discussed that. So the next thing that I'd like to say, so what are the current CDC recommendations? Um, they're basically that anyone who is not fully vaccinated should wear a public mask indoors. Um, or if you're fully vaccinated, you need to maximize protection from the Delta variant to prevent possibly spreading to others who wear a mask indoors in public if you're in area of high, substantial or high transmission. So what about Dane County? Dane County is an area of high transmission. Um, and this is directly from the CDC website. Um, and it says everyone should wear a mask in indoor public settings regardless of vaccination status. So, and the CDC is also recommending a universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors in a K-2 school setting regardless of vaccination status. So, um, the science is saying, the science behind this is saying that masking is very important for, um, for schools right now. So who's most at risk? Um, the unvaccinated and those with compromised immune systems. This includes some students and staff and family members of students and staff. On a personal note, I am the sole caregiver to a family member with stage four cancer. Um, I'm really concerned about how not masking could impact my role. Although I am vaccinated, we've had breakthrough cases in the district. So how is mask wearing going at McFarland School District? Great. Um, my experience is that almost students, all students are doing a great job, although they need a few reminders to pull up their mask after it slips down. My classes are fully masked and compliant to masking rules. I mean, obviously, they are an inconvenience and people would prefer, prefer not to wear them, but they're doing great with them. They know how to do this. They're capable of hard things. Um, sometimes I have to ask the students to speak up during class discussion, but otherwise, they've had little impact on actual classroom learning. My most significant educational concerns right now are reteaching students how to be in the classroom again, as well as supporting students who lost a great deal of socio-emotional learning as well away from school. Masks are actually a minimal concern for me. So I'm also concerned about the timing, particularly of the first three options. Um, over the course of the pandemic, we've really seen increase in positive cases post-break. Friends and families are getting together more often during these times, and quite simply, we are around a lot of people who aren't in our everyday circle. Taking our masks off right after these breaks doesn't seem safe. It would be, uh, it would be advisable to wait until we have some post-break data. Why make this decision right now? Um, will optional masking affect the relationship between those who mask and those who don't at school? Um, I think it will. Um, for some people, wearing masks has become a political issue rather than one of public health. I have concerns that those debates might spill over into the school. Right now, those discussions are minimal because everyone has to wear one. Um, who will wear a mask if any, any of these five proposals besides five are approved? Um, really, only the unvaccinated students and staff would be required to wear a mask. Um, how will staff enforce a mandate that unvaccinated students be masked? To be honest, I really don't know. Identification and tracking of unvaccinated students in the hallway or classroom seems like an impossible task and one that would be pretty difficult for me to take on at this point. Um, what about the sub shortage? This is a big concern of mine if we're missing school. Um, right now, the sub shortage is, um, is a real issue. If we're unmasked, the chances of missing a day of teaching due to COVID or simply a cold are increased, um, or maybe a cold that we need to get tested for COVID. We're already short of subs. Classroom coverage could be increasingly difficult. And, um, returning to in-person learning has been great, but, um, we're going to have some really, uh, big concerns with lost classroom minutes. If we, if we are unmasked, chances of missing a day of education due to COVID or a cold are increased for students and in larger, uh, larger populations. So in conclusion, I think that wearing a mask can't hurt you, it can only protect you. Uh, it's a mild inconvenience, but worth it for in-person learning. My experience that masks themselves have done little impact on learning in my classroom. Furthermore, the CDC recommends that schools continue to require masks for students and staff. I see no reason to change the policy at McFarland School District for any grade level at this time. I believe it would be a mistake for the board to do otherwise. I do hope that there will be a day soon where we can all take them off for good, but this is not that time. Uh, I'd like to thank you and the board for listening to my comments and, um, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now be moving Sandra out and moving on to the person. And give me one moment. Okay. All right, at this time, we've received one additional comment. We have Samantha Zalenga, 3615 Rankin Road. I will be now promoting Samantha to a panelist. All right, Samantha should be joining us momentarily.
Hi. Can you read me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, I know the main conversation about tonight has been about masks, which I'm going to reach at in another moment, but I'd like to bring something else to the board's attention. Um, about a week and a half ago, I was sent a legal notice about my son's vaccination rate. My son has remained home since March of 2020 because he has medical and neurological concerns regarding COVID. So I have decided to homeschool, as in like homeschool, homeschool file with DPI. McFarland sent me a legal notice saying that they did not have his vaccination records on file. I emailed, uh, Greg Nelson, Lauren, and Dr. Anderson. Greg responded, and he's absolutely amazing, and I'm very thankful for him. And actually, I'm really sad my child is missing out on so much of CPS because of him. Um, it was discovered that I was sent this notice because how McFarland is informing parents like myself who chose to keep their children home because of COVID is to have us partially enrolled. So I was sent a notice being threatened with legal action and being threatened to take to court and being threatened fines. We have figured this out, but I would like to stress that it is highly inappropriate and highly unprofessional to be sending a homeschool parent a, a threat of legal repercussions. So I would request that someone figure out, how to figure out how to inform all of us that have kept our children home to not be receiving legal notices, to not be receiving notices that we owe fees for field trips even though our children are not attending. Like, I shouldn't be threatened with being taken to court for no reason when I'm following my legal obligation for educating my child. So moving on as far as masks, I'm not going to dive into everything. As you heard other parents say, like, our vaccination rate among students isn't very high. The layered approach is the best. Um, the survey that you sent out about masks was not well-worded at all. A lot of parents in the community were very confused about it. We did receive some clarification from Dr. Anderson about it, but that again had to be relayed from parent to parent as opposed to being relayed from him. So those survey results should be taken with a grain of salt because it was, it just wasn't clear at all. So I'd like to delve into some more things. Um, is someone else mentioned about anti-maskers having a very strong voice? A lot of us are aware of the national movement that the alt-right is making against school boards. The U.S. Attorney General is investigating these organizations, but we are all well-aware that there are movements against school boards for mask mandates and what they claim to be CRT. I would like to remind you all, you are a district in Dane County. We are one of the most liberal and educated counties in the entire country. So please, please, do not give in or do not worry about anti-maskers and any threats that they might send you. Because the parents in this community are primarily pro-mask. The parents in this county are primarily pro-mask. And you have nothing to worry about like these other counties and other school board members in red counties do. Okay? So just please, like, do not take that into consideration at all. We got you. You're fine. I'd also like to address McFarland's inherent need to feel different and superior to other districts. I graduated from McFarland in 2004, and this attitude has always existed. This attitude is spoken widely by members of the administration, including, like Jeff Mahoney has said, at school board meetings, we've always tried to remain as normal as possible. Trying to remain as normal as possible and trying to be special is not worth the physical or mental well-being of our children. Then moving that into mental health. I hear a lot about the physical health of children. My son is autistic, he has ADHD, and he has OCD as well as medical concerns. He had a meeting with his psychiatrist on Friday, and I discussed with him the, Dr. Anderson's proposal of making masks optional. His psychiatrist said, why would they do that? That is only going to make school more inconsistent for children. So I wanted to send my son back when he was vaccinated, and he's not coming back anymore. He might come back next year. Because taking away masks, if you're going to create more quarantines, is going to create teachers being out. Like, I heard at CPS, they couldn't find a sub, so they sprinkled the students among other, other classrooms. How does that work for children who have anxiety and neurological concerns and they get to school and they say you're going to another classroom that day? That doesn't work. That doesn't work for, for children like mine. So when we talk about mental health and how it's best for the mental health of children to be in school full-time, that has to do with masks. And in order to keep schools open full-time, we need masks for that layer approach. I'd also like to address something else that kind of concerns me, and that is trusting public health. So PHMDC, the CDC, AAAP, Wisconsin NHS, all recommends masks. So PHMDC is taking away the requirement, but they're still recommending it. So when your doctor says that they recommend something, does that mean that you just ignore it because they're not saying you have to? Or do you think you should take your doctor's recommendation? Because for me, I'm not a science person. I'm a legal person. Never been science, math, not my thing. So what I do is I refer to the science and medical people because I believe that they know more about that subject than I do. This has been a problem across our entire country, of people questioning doctors and epidemiologists and public health officials and saying, oh, they don't know what they're talking about. Talking about these people who have spent like 10-plus years getting advanced degrees in these fields. Why do any of us that don't have this experience and this education think that we know more than them? We should be following recommendations of public health officials. And we should teach our children to follow the recommendations of well-educated and well-experienced people in that specific field. Like, we don't need to be taking medical advice from Joe Rogan. We need to be taking medical advice from public health Madison Dane County. And so by ignoring their recommendations, we're just solidifying that in our children, that they should not follow the recommendations of people who are well-educated and well-worked in that field. So I would ask the board to think very critically about this, that it's not just a surface-level issue. And that there's a lot more details when it comes down to this, and there is long-lasting impacts for our children. That includes their mental health and their trust in professionals. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, one and all, I believe that concludes our public comment section of the meeting. And we will move to, uh, superintendent's report, I believe.
Yep. And the first thing I want to bring your attention is that we did have a lockdown drill. And one of the requirements is that every time we have a lockdown drill, that we send a report to the board. So what you have in your packet is the report from the lockdown drill that was conducted at Indian Mount Middle School. It's conducted on November 10th, and it goes through the timeline of events. So we did it in the morning. We talked about these things prior so that the students would know what, what the, what the reason for the lockdown was and what the procedures were with the drill. So this is a written report that complies. So every time we do a lockdown drill, you'll receive one of these probably at the next board meeting. And other than that, everything should have been covered in McFarland minutes. And our next board meetings are coming up sooner than later.
All right, discussion items. Uh, first, we are going to review results of the strategic planning and superintendent search survey.
All right, I just finished it today. So I sent you these, uh, the, um, now remember, this is an overview draft, so this is trying to compile. We had 66 staff members and I think 146, um, parents, uh, community members that responded. So I tried to go through all the responses and categorize them to come up with what I thought were the general themes. So what you see is under each of the questions. So what you see is under each of the questions, the responses, the responses that appeared the most often under the staff and the ones that appeared the most often under the parent and the community. For each of the questions, there was one question that we asked staff members. We didn't ask community members, and that under the strategic planning one. And that was basically, you know, what could we do right away? Are there any new or what are some specific things that you feel could be done right now that would improve the educational outcomes of our district? That was on the staff response, thought we should ask that. We didn't ask that in the parents, so that's why there's no responses under that. One of the things that I think came through loud and clear is that people are grateful that you asked for their opinion. So there's a variety of opinions underneath, and I don't want to read each one because you can do that. But basically, what I asked you to do is, under the superintendent's search, that's probably one of the things that we're going to be discussing, you know, soon, is to take a look at what staff and parents had to say about what type of qualities they would like you to look for in the next superintendent, some of the challenges that the new superintendent will probably encounter, and what they believe should be the responses of that individual. And of course, the strategic is one of the things that we'll be working on a little bit now and then more once the new superintendent is hired. But this should give us at least a basis for discussion on what we think should be maybe some of the major goals. So it should be interesting reading. It was interesting reading for me. Remember, you do have access to all of the comments so that, you know, you can read through all of them to determine, you know, in case I didn't characterize something exactly the right way. But this should give you at least a general outline of what the survey. I will give these results also to the public. I believe if you ask for people's opinion, you should give them. I think this next week will be for the results of superintendent's search because I hadn't completed for the strategic survey. I'll do that in the future blog. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or else I would just ask you to read them carefully. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Sounds good. Review draft 2022-2023 calendar option.
Okay, well, there's two things. One is you get to see the staff survey. So we put out a survey to the staff. We had, I think, 259 responses to the calendar survey. Basically, this is one of those surveys that, it was pretty clear. 96% of the staff wanted us to create a calendar that was either similar to the traditional calendar we already have or the traditional calendar with some additional vacation days. So that was 96%. So the other 4% had, you know, different other options available. But I think it was a pretty clear, you know, survey results on what they were looking for.
That's a mandate. 96%.
So you have a list of what the survey was and all of the various comments that went with it. So then what I did is I have created several drafts, but the latest one went out to you this morning, that taking everybody's comments so far basically has us starting with our in-services on August 24th, 25th, 26th, then having several days off before students start on September 1st. And then we would end, students would end on June 8th, staff would end on June 9th. So it's basically a traditional calendar that has just a few more vacation days than the past. I will send this out, we're going to talk about this at the berserk meeting on Wednesday, and I will send this draft out to all staff tomorrow so they have a chance to take a look at it and give comments so that they can give it to their reps. And hopefully, is after everybody's had their chance to comment, and we, if there's any other modifications or changes, I'll be able to bring it to the board in December for.
Now, with the additional vacation days, how close are we in terms of meeting our required days in school or minutes of instruction?
We've met them all, and we still have some flex. So if we have some inclement weather days and have to cancel, we don't have to.
So we've got two or three extra built in?
Yeah, I think we have three.
Okay. All right.
The berserk meeting is at 4:00, I believe?
4:30. I wanted it at 4:00, but they say we can't have the room at WBEAS until 4:30. So 4:30, and we will, this is one of our discussion topics. Hopefully, staff members have a chance to take a look at it and to give some input to their representatives or send it directly to myself or one of us. But it does have the survey, all the results, and then the latest draft. And like I said, hopefully, we'll have, this is an action item for you, the first meeting in December.
Okay, what do we have next? Review superintendent job posting?
All right, there's not a, there's not a piece of paper for you to look at on this. Basically, what it is is that we have two things that you will be talking about a little bit later that go into the posting. One is the job description, so that's later on. Part of the job posting will have the job description posted so that all applicants can see what the latest job description is. So if you approve it or if you make changes so that it would be approved with any modifications, we'll put that on the, and then the questions. We took all the questions. I sent you the ones that appeared to have the most consensus for ones to ask. There's a lot of other questions that are good questions. They can be asked during the interviews, so it's not that we won't get answers. We wanted to limit it to basically five questions that, and I think everybody had basically weighed in, so I took those five essay questions. If you're still good with that, what I'll do is I'll put those within the application blank, attach the job description to it, post it on WeCan and the Career Leadership. That sends it out not only throughout the state, but it actually has national coverage. So people throughout the United States will be able to see our opening. They will then send their application materials to WeCan, which is basically an educator's job site. You will all have access to that. So as an application comes in, you'll be able to see the application materials. What we always ask for is we ask for the credentials, credentials transcripts. We always ask for three letters of reference, a cover letter, the answers to the questions. So the basic materials in this, and as you read through those, then what we will do is later on, when the applications are all in and we've closed the deadline, what my guess is right now, I'm thinking it's probably best to close it the last day of winter break so that the people that, you know, may be busy and not have time until that time will be able to finish it. And then we would schedule a meeting sometime after winter break, probably Saturday, to sit down, have a special meeting to basically discuss each one of those and determine which ones you feel would deserve interviews. And then we would, you know, call those for first round. In the meantime, we'll talk about the interview committees, who you'd want to be on there so they can come up with their questions. So, but first, we need to get posted. There's already superintendent postings out there. And if you read the little clips, more and more superintendents have turned letters into their boards saying that they are retiring, and so they are looking for superintendents. So basically, is if you approve the job description, if the questions are ones that are acceptable to you, then I'll start working on posting tomorrow.
All right. Anything else on that? If not, we'll move along to discussion and possible action on COVID-19 protocols. Wayne, you want to lead us through this one?
Yep. The first I want to bring it to your attention is that, as I brought forward right away, is that Dane County will be dropping their mask mandate on November 27th. From that point on, then each district will be able to determine what it feels should be its mask requirements. And one of the things that I send with you in every board packet because we've told the public that we will review the COVID protocols at least every month. So what, if you have them in your packet, which I'm sure you do, these are the current ones that we passed in August before the mandate went in place. It dealt with our metrics. It dealt with our contract tracing. It dealt with our co-curricular activities. So if you wanted, once the mask mandate was over, you could simply revert back to the, basically to the protocols that you had set forth at the very beginning of this school year that did require masking. The difference would be is that in co-curricular activities, we did have whether or not, and I'll just read those so everybody can hear it. Under co-curriculars, the school district in McFarland will follow COVID-19 protocols of the schools that we are participating against, where at their school facilities. Because many of our competitors are outside of Dane County, and many of those do not have any masking requirements. The competitors and spectators from other school districts will follow the school district in McFarland's COVID-19 protocols when they're using our district facilities for home events, which they are, which we've been following. Participants and spectators from outside co-curricular activities will not need to wear masks, which would be a little different than what we have currently when the mask mandate was in fact. When the mask mandate went, everybody had to wear masks on their facilities. There will not be a limited number of spectators other than the limit imposed by the space capacity that are able to observe an indoor event. Spectators attending co-curricular events will need to wear a mask. If a spectator chooses not to wear a mask, they will give them the option of putting on a mask or staying or leaving the co-curricular event. And participants of inside co-curricular events will not need to wear a mask when competing. Participants who are on the bench or on deck will be required to wear a mask, and coaches will need to wear a mask while coaching inside. So the big change would be is if you reverted back, is that when our athletes are competing, they would not need to wear a mask when they're at home. Already, when they're away, as it was alluding even to state tournaments, they weren't required to wear masks. They were at home under the current mask mandate. When the mask mandate goes away, if you went back to the original protocols, then at least when they're competing at home, what I would say is when they're doing their practice, their physical practice, they wouldn't have to wear the masks. But during, if they're sitting on the bench, if they're just having team meetings, then they would be. As has been brought up is that we have basically the option of determining what we think is best for the school district in McFarland after the mask mandate is over. Now, I surveyed the staff, and I gave them two surveys. The first survey was very short. And if I would have thought deeper about it, I would have asked more questions than what I did the second survey. You have the results of those, so I tried to be pretty specific in that survey to lay out the various options for if we were to go. And I think the wording that basically is the best is encourage and strongly recommend it to wear masks, but it would not be mandated. Would be, as I put in the options, one is to do that once the mask mandate is over. The second option is to do that after winter break was over. The third is at the end of semester. The fourth was when public health Madison or Dane County issued basically an announcement that they felt was safe to be indoors without masks or until the end of this school year. I asked that for each of the various buildings, and you have the results of those surveys with you. I did also put, and we had 259 responses, so we had a very good participation rate in that survey. The one I had put out to parents received slightly over 1,000 responses. As you did hear from some parents, they thought it was confusing. I apologize for that. If the board would like, I could put out a survey to the board or to the families tomorrow that is similar in structure to the one I sent to the staff members. I did not have any staff member say that that was confusing. We could send that out so that you could get that data so that, as people said, they didn't exactly know how to fill out the first survey, so the responses might be a little corrupted. If you'd like, I can resend it. I think that survey is pretty clear to give out the options so that each family had the opportunity to send that, and then you could look at what parents had to say before you made your decision. If you decided to go that route, then you would not want to make a decision tonight. Then you'd probably want to have a special meeting. The only time I can assume you'd have that special meeting would be next Monday because that would be still before we went on Thanksgiving break and before the mask mandate was over, if you wanted to make a decision prior to that. Doesn't mean you have to make a decision prior to that, but I think people are looking to determine, once the mask mandate is over, what would the board like to do? So I guess that's part of the question at hand, is we can gather more information before the decision-making process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. The recommendation I did put out was, at least for the high school, is to go to, and the wording I would call now is that masks will be strongly encouraged and recommended, but not mandated for those individuals who are vaccinated. And then we would take a look. We could put forth, I had put after winter break, but we could delay that until there's more information available. But I thought the high school with athletics and with the, I thought that might be a place at least to start, and then you could use that as a, you know, a little bit of an example to find out if you want to expand at other schools. You may want to keep the mask mandate for all schools, but I thought this was at least a place to start.
Why don't we get some discussion rolling here? I personally would like to hear maybe briefly what the principal at each one of the schools is thinking in terms of this recommendation and how it impacts their particular building. So if that would be all right, we could just go around the horn here and hear all four of the principals. Doesn't have to be a big thing, just a brief synopsis of where your thinking is at on this. Jeff, you want to start?
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
There is an emotion on the floor, though.
No.
We talked about the recommendation, and this is where we demanded. Call a question to you, I guess, and we're divided on the staff and the community, so.
I can't hear.
I can't. I can't hear.
Staff is divided.
He said that basically it's up to you.
It's up to us.
The staff is divided, the community is divided.
Yeah.
Falls in earlapse.
Yep. All right.
That was paraphrasing.
If you could speak up a little bit, Corey, that might be helpful.
Can you, can you hear me now? Let me, let me try this through. All right. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I think right now our students are just entering into the vaccination phase, so really not really having a whole lot of strong feeling on it in terms of, again, as Jeff said, you know, we know that the community and staff everyone's pretty divided on it. But I would say currently, my focus is on, you know, getting some data back and seeing what, you know, our students are going to, what the numbers are going to play like in terms of their vaccination rate, just like we have over time, seen what that looks like for our high school students. And in the meantime, we're focused on following protocols and, you know, quarantining, contact tracing as normal, and educating kids.
Okay, thank you.
And Greg isn't here, but Brooke is.
I think Brooke. Yep, Brooke, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think at Conroyville, speaking on this one, our biggest concern is just the number of students that maybe they need. that may be in quarantine if we are changing what the mask mandate looks like without changing kind of our contact tracing. So we would recommend at our level, wearing masks as long as we can to make sure that as many students can be educated in our language and continue to listen. One of the challenges is with not being able to know at first glance to be vaccinated or not. But taking a look at how that looks and feels to staff is important to consider, I think. And also what we're doing to do the contact tracing with students that are vaccinated or not vaccinated and just step that to add that later to the ongoing contact tracing. So it is, you know, work. And it's for new ones' work to find those points to see and different levels of education. But we are very willing, and that works as the young folks want to see. We are about how that looks a little bit different than what we've been doing for the last. And that is by seeing that we're full classes in quarantine with large groups of people in quarantine and they're not changing at our level.
If Paul's available, you might want to ask Paul for his input as far as co-curriculars.
Mister, thank you, Brooke. Mister Ackley, give us, give us your wisdom on the mask mandate options.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think it's, obviously, we had many open comments tonight that gave us different perceptions of the activities. This is a challenging topic, the same at least in regards to all that. When it comes to that, what I would recommend is what Paul was over there, the leader, the doctor Anderson, we need to, especially. I have concerns with our athletes wearing masks, throwing masks at all people. On exercise, we're going to, or let the, it's a challenge for them. And I just feel like, you know, the vaccination rates I think are very high in high school. And I think that we make it now for a whole fall season. They've been very successful compared to what happens. We had, for most of the days, I have the vaccine facility. So I believe in masks as a whole. I believe that there's, but not.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Paul. Maybe Lauren and Melissa. Lauren, would you like to go first? Ooh, I can't hear Lauren at all.
Can you hear me now?
Not very well.
I'm not believing that. I need to talk louder. But people may whatever you guys go with. We're not everything for what you want to, but whether masks are a mask, people may.
So they'll make it work.
No, I understand that. That's what you guys do, that's how you function.
I don't, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I don't have anything to add, you know, what you've heard, you know, from the public and from our colleagues this evening. It is, you know, in your hands, and there's guidance from our medical advisor and from Public Health. And it is, it is in your hands.
All right, thank you. Thanks very much, Melissa. And I don't know if we aren't going to take the opportunity at some time later on in the meeting. But just in case we don't, I just wanted to congratulate everyone involved in the vaccination clinic held here over the weekend. I heard nothing but positive comments from virtually everyone who went through. People went out of their way to compliment the organization, the compassion and empathy that was shown. We got a bunch of, a bunch of, you know, five to 11-year-old kids. And there's, most five-year-old kids don't like needles a whole lot. And the staff was wonderful with them, from what I understand. So please accept my personal thanks and appreciation for all the hard work that you guys are doing to make this district the special district that it is. And I couldn't be more proud of the efforts of the McFarland School District over this last weekend. So thanks very much to everyone who was involved in this. Okay, moving on. Why don't we kind of go around the room here? I'd like to hear from each of the board members on what their thoughts are at this point in time and if we are in position to make a decision of some sort this evening or if we feel like we need to gather more information and talk about how much of the initial survey we should use and how much we shouldn't, if that's the case. And if we do want indeed to send this additional survey out, it will necessitate a meeting next Monday, a special meeting to try to make a decision. So if we could go around the room, I would appreciate it. Bruce?
Yeah, I'll start. I just kind of jotted down a whole bunch of thoughts as I was going through it. I'm not sure this is going to be appreciated by people, but I want you to know, I didn't bring it, I should have. I should have brought my mask that I ran all winter. Whenever it's 15 degrees or lower, and I ran up to 100 miles a week, I ran with a mask. And so that was just common. I did that at Syracuse, I did it in Madison. A lot of people think that we're running that all indoors. We rarely ran indoors. We ran most of our stuff outside. So I know I was, I guess, an elite athlete, but the truth of the matter is, a lot of kids on my team and whatnot who were not elite athletes, who I trained with, they got by fine. I think the whole key here is it's a balance, and we've got to try to find a balance. So if I have one thing that I'm really proud of so far being on this board is that we've been able to work together. And I'm wearing a shirt that says, "Think Team, Help Each Other." It was my favorite shirt that I used to try to get across that point with my athletes. And I have feelings of what I'd like to do, and I'll mention them. But I think in the end, I'm going to try as much as I can to try to build a consensus and that we work together because I think that's what's best for our community. And I think our community is special. I actually was there on Saturday morning at that clinic, and it was amazing. There were nurses there, there was one from Middleton. She devoted, I only was there for four hours. She was there in the morning, afternoon, on Saturday and Sunday. And I just, I was just so amazed. And I was so proud of the number of people who brought their children. I, it just to me, it was amazing. And I know there's people in this community who kind of look at, you know, Dane County, and they kind of roll their eyes because, and this is a very good point, and the people have to realize this. There are a lot of schools all around this state who are, they've been going without masks. And I can't say they're doing as well as we are, but I want people to realize, particularly the people who would like to, you know, just open everything up. They roll their eyes when they think about Dane County. But the truth of the matter is, we're in the fastest-growing region of Wisconsin. We are in the number-one area for business growth in Wisconsin. There's a reason why a lot of people come to Dane County. So I feel like sometimes you can't have it both ways. You came here because this is a great place to raise your kids. And just looking again at that clinic that morning, these were people who were very serious about making sure that their kids were taken care of. And I, again, for you two guys in particular, you know, Kathy McCluskey, she just would look at me with that one eye, and she would say, "This is a special place." And I remember as a 25-year-old teacher going like, "Okay." I guess it scared the heck out of me. But the truth of the matter is, she was absolutely right. This is an amazing place. I'm, I think people have to realize that COVID is going to be around for a while. It's not going anywhere, this is what the experts are telling us. So the idea that we're going to go to some level where it's never going to be, we're not going to ever need masks again, or we can do away with them altogether, excuse me, is, that's probably pretty far off. And I think we've got to try to find that balance on what's going to be good. I think that protocols, it scares me. Because, I mean, if the layered approach, and that's what the science seems to tell us is the best way. If we take away masks, all of a sudden, you start looking at the Conradellium, you start looking at obese intermediate school, and they don't have as much room as you really would like so the kids could space out. So you're kind of, the idea is, well, if you take away one of the layers, then you've got to make sure that you have the others. My fear is that then you start rolling back all the layers, and then I get concerned about that. If I had my approach, I would like to wait, even in the high school, for a little bit of time after Thanksgiving. I'd like to see, has there been a spike? I talked with Dr. Anderson. He feels that you probably won't even have that information until probably January. So again, I'm trying to weigh in my head, how do we handle this thing? And as I said, I'm going to try to work in a consensus with my, with all of you. But there's a part of me goes, it would be nice to know if there has been a spike. Not knowing that, I guess I would kind of go along with, I think it should start at high school. I think it's a shame we couldn't hear Aaron, he was busy tonight. But the middle school is the one that I'm, I'm not quite sure how you handle that. I think that's the one that's difficult. I think the obese intermediate school, the Conradellium, should probably be handled the same way. I think they're, whatever it is. And there, I do tend to agree with what Dr. Anderson suggested, is that we wait. I'm not sure January 2nd. Part of me feels like I would wait a little bit longer, maybe the end of the term, and see if there's been a spike, and then you go that way. So, sorry, I haven't answered anything.
No, no, that's fine.
But I am going to try to teach all, or tell all of us that I think it's important we try to stick together as much as we can.
And I think, I think one, one thing that may help us a bit at least, and this is just strictly a coincidence, is that last weekend with, we had two athletic teams that were playing in state tournament-type settings. So at least in Green Bay, I know there was probably 300, 400, you know, spectators that were in. There were no spacing. It was just everybody was sitting pretty much on top of each other. All the athletes and staff, working staff, officials, there were no masks. I mean, that, I, even in, my wife and I did the Becker Hall of Fame tour and the Title Town and all of those things. I don't think we saw 10 masks all weekend. So being that that was last weekend, I suspect that, I don't know if it could happen, you know, this week yet or maybe into next week. We could see if there was any sort of, I don't know, do they call it super-spreader or whatever the events are where it gets likely that the transmission could happen. I would think that we might know if anything out of the ordinary happened up in Green Bay before too long.
Just a question. John Yields, I just am visiting, you know, as far as the, that goes. Within the student population from McFarland, certainly you can track that because if they've been exposed last weekend, how do we, you know, it's usually a five to 14-day incubation period. So if it doesn't happen within that time frame, probably good chances are, I can see it. How many cases of COVID have occurred in this school? Does, you know?
I'm sorry.
We do, but it's not public comments anymore, so it's just discussion.
Yeah, no, this is like law, it's not our choice. We had to follow the law. We would love to chat with you, believe me. Thank you, though.
But if you call me tomorrow, I can give you that number.
Okay, thanks. There's a way.
And I'll actually mention it. Yeah, I know, it's really, yeah.
All right. I'm done. Pretty moved, Christine?
Well, yeah, so I'll just, I'll just respond because I do have it up. I was going to have it be part of my, my thinking as well. So I keep thinking about, and I feel like the extracurriculars is separate from school. So I'm just going to speak about school right now because I think they really should be separate motions perhaps if we're going to do those. My, my thinking is what, you know, my, I feel like our goal as a district and a board should be a couple of things. One is to, you know, maintain the basic layer of safety. Like that's the Maslow's hierarchy. If you're not safe, you can't learn. So safety is first, and keeping kids in school and not being online. That's, that's my other, that'd be my goal. And I'm speaking for myself for both of those, I guess. So what, what do we do to make sure that we keep kids and teachers in school and we keep them well? And how does any changes affect our protocols, especially contact tracing and quarantining? So we've had 296 students in quarantine and 60 positive student cases since September 1st. So that, actually, it's a little bit higher today because we had eight more come in today. So when I think about that, I also think about, you know, like you were giving the example of the Green Bay. Well, they're not going to pass it along because they're wearing masks. So we're not going to have those breakthrough cases.
Oh, we'll get back here.
Right, right. So, you know what I mean? So, I mean, that's the layer of protection that then we have when everyone comes back here, and it's important, right? We know, and people keep saying, I, I am, these aren't opinions, and also, I'm representing a whole bunch of people. This isn't my personal opinion. People keep asking us to use the science, and we know that people who are vaccinated have breakthrough cases. And we know that people who are vaccinated can carry COVID and pass it along. So vaccinated people without masks can spread it. So we are short subs, we don't have enough subs. We don't have, we're having, we've had three classrooms move to virtual. That's not great for anybody. I, I feel, I know from the data, science, once again, the transmission rate right now is still high, and it's starting to go up again. We've got holidays coming up and people being vaccinated. I know last year, we did not gather as a family, and this year we might. I'm not sure all of us have boosters now because a number of my family work in healthcare. So maybe that's going to be the case. I'm with Bruce in thinking that a little bit more time is necessary before we make any more changes. My goal, once again, is just to keep students in school, and I know that COVID may be around, but we're not going to, even with the five to 11-year-olds, by the end of this month, they're not going to be all vaccinated. And we also know that there could be breakthrough cases. So I feel like it's our job, safety first, learning the best way possible first. So what is the way that we do that? Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Arlen?
Well, I believe in the masks, and I've been following all the rules. I've had lots of conversations with lots of people that have different opinions. I, I also questioned, you know, or the people questioned the information that's out there, how bad it is. There's different people talking about different opinions about things. And I, I've come to a point that I don't have this thing. I can't put it, nail it right down, what's right and what's wrong. And I, and I, I've come down to where I, you know, I think, I think it's just going to have to come to be a choice. I mean, people got to walk their walk. I'm responsible for my family. I'm responsible for what, you know, when our kids, whatever they did, I, you know, I, we gave them, my wife and I gave them direction, and that's the way we went with it. I understand the elementary and, and Wobesa, what we have. And the biggest question has been lunches and having everybody together and stuff like that, you know, and we're trying. We're trying to do our best we can down there. I guess personally, I would like to see that go a little longer with masks, especially them. But I think in the middle school and high school, I think, you know, I think we should make it optional and go and work it through. I, I scratched my head. I, I work with people from, that, that don't live in the county, or they're all over the place, and talk to everybody that I run into. And I, I tell you, it's just going to have to come down to a personal choice. We all take responsibility for our families. We take responsibility for a district, yes, we do. But as a But as a parent, I think we have to start giving people some latitude that they can, they can make their own call and we are going to have to go forward. And so that's where I am, so I'm, and that's taken, that's been hard for me to get there. But I see some validity in that how people have different opinions on this. And it's not just, it's not just saying that, you know, the government's not, not saying this right or, or we kind of just follow this. I think there's actually, I think this is, is up in the air. I don't, I don't know if it's, I just don't know. And so I'm there, and that's where I told you, I'm, I'm kind of feeling that with the older kids and, but the younger ones, I think I'm still more personally concerned about. And I think, and I can understand that and, because we've all been watching that very tightly. But I think it's going to be optional, that's where I would be on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kate.
So I think it's important to look at what we're trying to achieve here and what our goal is with masking. So is COVID going to go away? No, I mean, a year ago I sat and listened to a board meeting talking about the exact same things. A year later, you know, unfortunately, we had really high hopes that we wouldn't be in this position. And we are. And I think that's a reality of the future, at least in the short term, is that COVID's still going to exist. And let's say we get rid of masks in the high school as soon as the mask mandate ends. I mean, you're going to see more COVID cases probably, but we need to expect that if, if that's what we decide to do. Now, the goal of the vaccine isn't, we've seen that people who get the vaccine can still get COVID, I'm not disagreeing with that. The goal of the vaccine is to prevent that serious illness.
Yes.
I think it's, I, I agree that with the younger kids, I think we, we probably need to see what the vaccination rates are and, you know, their, their clothes are together, there's been a lot more spread. Now, I think COVID protocols are going to change obviously and quarantine guidelines because some of these kids will be fully vaccinated. So you're not going to see as many that are out because of close contact exposure once they're vaccinated, if they're fully vaccinated. With the older kids, I'm at the point where, especially in the high school, now I think the middle school is very difficult. Because you've got two grades of kids who have had access to the vaccine since May. So that's, that's the seventh and eighth graders. So anyone twelve and older has had access to that vaccine for quite some time. But you've also got a grade in that school who's had access to that vaccine for a week, and that's the sixth graders. So how you determine when the right time is, if there's a right time for those kids to not wear masks is a little more difficult. So I just want to point that out. With the high school, I'm at the point where I feel like we should be recommending masks. But I, the vaccine has been available for a long time. I totally understand what Bruce, you and Christine have said and, and I agree with you to, to some extent. But I will tell you that even talking about athletics in Green Bay, you know, those kids, they are together. They're together without masks. So although we might not see the same spike, we'd see if they were all in school without masks on, those kids are all together. And they're spending time together maskless. And, and I, I think that we just need to understand that, you know, that, that some of those spread, some of that spread that we're seeing or that would potentially be seen, I mean, we should actually already be seeing if you think about it, right? Because they're going to athletic events outside of the county or they're going to do things. And they don't go to each other's houses and wear a mask, you know, when they spend time together. So I'm at the point where I'm, I'm personally okay with a mask recommended option for the high school. For the rest, I think we need, we probably need more data. Probably need to send out a second survey, but.
As, as everyone's obviously aware, this is, this is a difficult decision. But I think one that, that we need to make sooner rather than later. I am, I personally am of the opinion that, that we probably need to send that other survey out. Because I think, I think once we see the results of that, we know that people are clear on, on what we were looking for. We're not going to have the confusion that we had with that first one. I think it's important to gather the, the, to gather the information from the community, even outside, like, you know, like we've talked about before. Eighty percent of our community has no, no real connection to the school district. They don't have kids in school currently, some maybe never did. So I, I think we certainly need, need to gather community information and, and review it. So I think I would personally be in favor of not making a decision this evening based on, on the surveys that we've got thus far. I would prefer, I think, to get, get a survey out that we, that we know isn't going to create the confusion that apparently this other one did. I'm all right with, you know, once those results are, are in, to sit down and talk about what, what they are and if they change in any significant way from what we're seeing now. But in terms of, in terms of the masking itself, I've struggled mightily with this. I, I am finding that I fall on the side of going along with the recommendation to go ahead and make masking strongly recommended as opposed to mandated in the high school. I think we need to wait on the middle school, the intermediate school and the elementary school until we get more vaccination data and get more of the kids fully vaccinated and see where our cases are at that point. Now, doing the high school on the, on the twenty-seventh or the twenty-ninth, I've, I've, in my own mind, I've, I've justified that. I think we need to wait until a week or two after winter break to consider the other three schools. I, I, that's just my personal opinion. I'd, I'd like to, to take whatever time is available to us and, and make sure that we're doing the things that as a board we've always said that we're going to do and that's to do what's best for the kids. And if, if keeping masks on, if, if it can be proven to me that that's going to, that's going to, going to make a, a big difference in the educational outcome that's going to happen the rest of the year, I don't know, we'll see. But I, I, I fall on letting the high school go strongly recommended and studying data as it comes, becomes available to us on the other three schools.
Can I ask a question of the group?
Absolutely.
What's the, so we know that there's going to be negative consequences without, or if we go mass optional, recommended, however you want to say it. What are, we have lots of negative outcomes for that. Why not then just do the positive in mask? Like what's, what's the negative outcome of that for a little while longer?
Well, but what's your, I guess, the question I would ask is at what point do you stop? There will always be a reason to keep masking, like even in the public comments, which I don't disagree with. Colds, influenza, those things, you know, yeah, those were not as high in the past year. And part of it was kids weren't in school, but I mean, masks do help. I don't disagree with that, it's just a question of when do you stop? Because.
Well, I think because we know kids of, you know, probably on average three, you know, two, we're probably at two point four in the district. Honestly, when I think about, right? So you've got, if your high schooler's not, they're possibly coming home and those, those K, K whatever are not masking if they're at home. So now you're bringing it to your K whatevers because they're going to bring it back. So I, I just, I, I, I'm confused with doing it partway. I mean, that's a confusing thing to me because these are families that, you know, there, there are definitely families with single kids. But, so what's, what's, what's the problem with just doing it longer until all the vaccination's done? We get through the holidays and so on. I, I'm just, I, it just feels a little rushed to me. And I don't see the negative, I mean, what's worse, I think, is for us to go back and say, oh, nope, you guys have to wear them now. So I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what's the pros and cons of this? There's a lot of cons. There's, or, there's a lot of pros to masking. I don't know what the con is besides personal choice, but the personal choice affects others. So it's not like wearing a seatbelt where if you're in an accident, you're going to get hurt. If you get COVID, you can give it to other people. So there's that personal choices, it's not really, it's a community choice. It's a community affected choice.
That's another discussion for sure.
So, I, I'm just curious, kind of the pros and cons thing.
Devil's advocate, I think what a lot of people would be saying is that it's been shown throughout the state that we're not having these enormous outbreaks. And so if they're seeming to be getting, getting by with it, then why aren't our kids doing the same? And I think that's what they're saying. I'm not sure I totally agree with it because I think in some ways what you're, you're saying makes a lot of sense. I just think, you know, and I said it, I think Kate said it really well, it's just that COVID's going to be around. And I, I think you could make the argument each year, we should have masks again, particularly to get into this deep winter month. And I'm not sure, I, I just don't know if you're going to be able to sell that to the public. And that's, that's almost.
And, and you know, I'm sorry.
No, no.
And, and I, and I appreciate public opinion, I appreciate public perception, but we're accountable. We're the ones who have to make the choice and live with it. So people can give opinions, but we have to live with that. You know, whatever choice we make can't be, well, the community thought we should do that necessarily. I think we also have to consider teachers and others who maybe have not had as much voice. So.
One, one other thing that I thought about tonight is, you know, people are talking about like the recommendations of the CDC and the recommendations of the PHMDC. Individually, I can't say that I, I disagree with any of that, but I also think the recommendations. And so we have to balance mandating versus recommending. And that's another decision I think we have to make. Is are we, we're still going to be recommending that and I understand that not everyone is going to mask. And I think that policing that's going to be very difficult. I mean, I'm not naive in thinking that you're not going to know who's vaccinated and who's not necessarily. But, but it's also just thinking about recommended versus mandating. And I, I hate the word mandate, but, you know, it's something to think about.
You know, perhaps, I'm sorry Christine, if you want to go.
Yeah, I just, I think I'm just, I think I'm going to be kind of lean, lean towards the conservative side on this. And I think once again, that, that there's not just the consequences to students, of course, but the consequences to the teachers. I'm sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought. Something you had said, Kate, that, that triggered a thought for me about, oh, like, you know, for example, subs, not, you know, not being able to have enough teachers. This is going to change the, the way that Lauren and all the health people do there. I mean, do we have enough even to do all of the, the tracing and, and so on without significantly changing all those protocols? So, so it's not, our decision has these ramifications for adding on work to an already stressed, burned out staff who are overworked. And I appreciate Lauren saying, we'll make it work and all the teachers will make it work. But we know where, where they're at right now. And, and they're tired and exhausted and their immune systems are low and, and so on. So sorry, I forgot my.
No, I think, I think that's a really valid point in and of itself. And I, I feel bad in a way that Dr. Anderson kind of threw that survey out. But I think he felt like you and like myself, and I think all of us feel, we've got to find out, how are the teachers doing? And I, I think in a way, in hindsight, you say, well, we should have just probably spent more time and I think each of us could have probably helped a little bit there. But I think the point was good and, and I am very concerned about that. It's, it's interesting what you said, Kate, and maybe it's the history teacher being coming out. This reminds me of prohibition, it's what, what you were saying. You know, I don't think there could be too many people who would argue that it's really good to drink. I don't think there's a whole lot, I mean, you can sit there and say, well, maybe one or two drinks in a week or whatever, a couple of drinks, you know, every couple of days might be quote unquote beneficial for you. But there's not too many really positive things about it. What happened with prohibition was, it was well intentioned, but in the end, it got people to not even respect the law. In fact, we made heroes out of Al Capone and others like that who were breaking it. And in a way, that's what kind of concerns me right now, we're, we're in a way doing that. I think everything you said makes total sense, but at some point, I know we're accountable. The truth is, if we get too far out of that mainstream, that's why, it's all a balance to me, it's all politics. We, we, we've got to find as best we can, we're threading a needle here and it's so difficult. I mean, Samantha said, Zalinga there in her last statement was, you know, you're going to have mandates. If I'm going to my doctor, my doctor says, I recommend you, you know, you start losing some weight or you change your diet. I would probably say, you know, not, what do you know? I would probably say, you're probably right. That doesn't mean I'll do it, but I mean, I would at least try to do it. And in a sense, that is what CDC is doing. I, I just hope, if there's one bit of good news, you guys, McFarland, there's all these schools in this, this area that were doing that clinic. We came out with the most. McFar, McFarland is special, I'm telling you, it's really awesome. And I'm really proud of this community and I just want to try to keep that. And for the people who are down on the district, we're, we're trying to find that, that edge, that edge and trying to stay on it as best we can. And at times we're going to slip off, but if we can stay close enough, we can get back on it, I think we can get through this. And I think that's what we have to do.
And, and what makes it especially difficult, I think, is if we, if we looked at these survey results and there was a, there was a consensus of any kind out there? You know, even if it was sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent. But what we're finding is that we're getting pretty close to, to a half and half in terms of opinions. And it would be easy if eighty percent of these respondents said that they prefer that we do it this way or that way. But it feels very much the same as it felt a year or so ago when we were debating whether or not to bring kids back into school and how to do it and when to do it. It was a fifty-fifty proposition. Every time we walked out of a meeting and made a decision, all we had to do was open our emails the next day and, and we'll find out that we pleased about half the people and we displeased about half the people. And that's what makes this stuff so hard. Now, I would love to be able to just think of Dane County in a vacuum. Just, just not know anything about what the other surrounding counties and the counties throughout the state, how they're, how they're handling this. And, and I can't help but come back to the overwhelming number of counties who were significantly less cautious to, to varying degrees than Dane County was. There's, there's districts very close, within thirty miles of Madison, that never did have a mask mandate and they don't do any contact tracing and they don't do any quarantines. And they haven't had significant issues.
Which, which district is that, Craig?
The Evansville District. It was about thirty, thirty or so miles away, very close to Dane County. It's just they don't happen to be in Dane County. And I, I, all the evidence I have about other counties and how they're doing this in terms of protocols and such is anecdotal. It's, it's from talking to people within other districts. I know Fort Atkinson had several difficulties early on where they had to switch back and forth a couple, two, three different times. And now that's obviously a, a worst case scenario, that's exactly what we don't want. But what makes this so hard is, is, you know, we all sit here and talk about this, we talk to all the building leadership. And I don't disagree with anything anybody said.
I agree.
I agree.
You know, that, that's what makes this so difficult. And, and, you know, you're told to follow the science. Well, okay, you know, I'm good with that. I'm, I'm not smart enough to, you know, know this stuff on my own, so I'll, I'll follow the science. But it, it seems to me that, that CDC is sending a mixed message. When they say they're going to go to, go away from a mandate and make it mask optional, but they're going to strongly recommend that all K-12 schools remain masked. It, it, they're. It, it, they're, it's a mixed message in turn, as far as I'm concerned. And I think it's kind of a, a cover your behind kind of message as well. Because they're, they're, they've just been getting nothing but beat up, you know, for two years now.
I mean, one thing you can do, look, is, and you're not the only board that's struggling with this tonight. I mean, two boards, I mean, some boards have already made their decisions. So, I mean, Waniki and Belleville, as some of them, they already have made their decisions to go mask strongly encouraged and recommended, but not mandated.
For what grades level, Dr. Anderson?
All.
All.
Middleton Cross Plains has theirs tonight. They have three options in front of their board, which they'll take, I don't know. Um, but basically all their options went to strongly encouraged or strongly recommended for all grade levels starting second semester. So.
When does the second semester start?
Mid-January.
Mid-January?
About third week of January. So, I mean, the other motions are one, the high school or various schools. Sun Prairie and Verona probably voting, I mean, it's not, Madison has already come out that they think they'll keep masks on for the remainder of the year. I mean, there isn't going to be a one size fits all for any of us, we're all going to be different.
Monona Grove is already.
Monona Grove, the, uh, Monona Grove did what I'm glad you're not doing because I want, I don't want it. Is the board abdicated theirs and said superintendent gets to decide.
Oh, wait.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, hold on. Why did you do that before we made a motion?
It's going to be a lot shorter.
Well, I mean, another option for you, because I do think, you know, either one is, like, put another survey, you can find what the parents would say. You know, because like you said, with the staff survey, but that, you know, that's kind of what I, I mean, my guess is I think it would come out that way with. Parent, did you put it out?
Fifty-fifty?
Pretty close. Yep, I think this is going to come out.
Yeah.
I mean, I do think that the high school has had a long opportunity to be vaccinated. I think that could be a trial for you. In other words, I mean, is anything as safe as having all the vaccine and masking? The answer is no. I mean, if you're strictly what is the very safest course that you can take for every student, then that would have to be, I think, the very safest course. Get already vaccinated, keep your, keep, uh, everybody masked inside the buildings. I mean, that probably by far is going to be your, you know, your safest strategy. I'm not going to argue that one bit. I do think it's going to come down eventually. Everybody made a choice. Make a choice whether or not you want to be vaccinated or whether or not, you know, you chose for whatever reason you had not to be vaccinated. And that, there could be a multitude of reasons for that. But eventually you make a choice for that. So, I mean, one of, so, I mean, a recommendation would be just a little different than the one that I put out that you can at least consider would be, I think, that to go for the mask strongly encouraged and recommended for high school once the mask mandate is over. To postpone any decisions on your other buildings until the second, beginning of the second semester, which would be the third week of January. By that time, the holiday seasons have passed. By that time, you have had, uh, given plenty of opportunity for people to get, um, the vaccines and have them fully vaccinated. You'll have, you know, the, the, if it's, if we call them super spreaders or whatever from the holidays, we'll have that time that you've been able to see from the high school whether or not there was a significant impact or not before you made it with the other schools.
Can I, Lauren, um, I don't recall, and excuse me for this, but did we see any significant increase or spike in, uh, the COVID cases last year post Thanksgiving and post winter break? I, I, I don't recall if we had any significant changes. Her body language looked positive.
But it wasn't a Delta, it wasn't a Delta virus.
Right, and Nash, and nationally it didn't happen. So we were pretty much in trend with what, with the.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Are, are we, you know, obviously we could sit and discuss.
Well, I'll support what he said. I, I'd go along with that.
And I don't see any point in, in waiting a week. I think it did, I don't think there's a lot going to change.
We've got the information that we need?
Wait, I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is.
So when we say, like, let's say we were to make a motion and we say it's, it's a mask highly recommended policy um, for individuals who have been vaccinated, how are you enforcing that? Is it, it's an on your honor thing?
Yes. If somebody tests positive, we can go into the register and check.
To see.
To see who is vaccinated, who's not.
Otherwise, we can't ask.
Well, we could ask, but we already have access. We can already go and input every individual that's been vaccinated, there's already record on that. We can access all the records. But we would have to go on the honor system in our school, so we are not going to go from, I mean, we're not going to have teachers go and check and ask, you know.
No.
Which are vaccinated. We expect, so.
That's what I figured.
On vaccinated people are not going to, more mass answers, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the answer is yes. I think to try to ask people to police, you know, if you see somebody, you're not going to know. You have to, now, one of the things that was brought is that I think there's a fair percentage of our students that are vaccinated, but there's a large percentage that are not. There will be a percentage of vaccinated students that decide to wear masks. There will be a percentage of on vaccinated students who choose not to wear masks. So we're not going to know if it came down to someone developed a case and through contact tracing, we can know, but just going through each classroom and determining, I would not expect my staff to, you know, to try to determine who's.
Yeah.
No, they're not, they're not the mask police.
Can, can I make a point? I want to just make very clear. I, I don't want, I, I think it's got to be in this, that if teachers feel they should be wearing a mask, they should be wearing a mask because I can see there'll be parents who would say, you know, my son, my daughter really can't hear what they're saying, so I, I'm going to request that, that they don't. I don't think that should be allowed. I think if a teacher feels this is something I want to wear, then they should be allowed to do that. And I, 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 I just proceed.
So you're saying that teachers will.
If teachers want to wear a mask.
If anybody wants to wear a mask, they can.
I would never deter anyone from wanting to.
Well, I, yeah, my, my fear is just simply the fact that, you know, there's going to be a group of people who are happy they've gotten this far and now they're going to want to go to the next step. It's like a two-year-old.
No, it's going to be difficult.
Yeah.
So this is just students, what, we haven't even talked about staff. Will it, will it apply to?
Be the same for staff.
For staff, okay. All right.
At the high school, one would be the same. And for the, for the middle schools and the, you know, the three elementary schools, everything would wait until, you know, beginning of second semester to make determination.
And, and we would never forbid a teacher from wearing a mask regardless. You know, the, the, there, there are many Asian countries that are mask society.
We're encouraging and strongly recommending that you do wear a mask. We're just saying that if you're fully vaccinated, that it's not a mandate, you wear it.
Just as a side note, um, I talked to Kristen Strong a couple of months ago when school started just about how this process was working, you know, as, because we had sent out a survey asking people to say, like, yes, my child's vaccinated or no, my child's not. But a lot of people didn't respond to that survey, which is fine. And so I'd asked how it was going, um, with like the quarantine, the contact tracing, tracing. And she said she was actually very surprised at the time with how many people were vaccinated, that they were unaware of, were vaccinated until they were close contact. And then the parents would say, oh, yes, they're vaccinated, you know, here's proof of vaccination. So I think in the younger schools, I know we were kind of just talking about the high school, but it's going to be a process there too, right? So as, as kids are close contacts, whether they're masked or unmasked, um, it's going to be a process of kind of determining, oh, wait, you are vaccinated. If they weren't vaccinated through our school, if they weren't, if it wasn't updated in the immunization registry, which is sometimes what happens, it doesn't get updated in that public record that the school nurse has access to. So just on a side note, I think as we're talking about work for the staff and things, it's, I mean, we have to be realistic that in these schools where the vaccinations are just starting, it's going to be a process because now the contact tracing is going to be different once these kids are fully vaccinated.
And I think really, if you ask the elementary principals, they would, and I won't speak for them, but they would probably say, leave the mask mandate, but get rid of the contact tracing. You know, because that way, that's what takes up all of their time, you know? And if people are vaccinated, if they wear masks, it's a contact tracing. And then when you're quarantined, is if you're, if you show symptoms, if you're peste of or, or symptoms. I know that it's a contact tracing, it takes all of their time, it makes it difficult.
Isn't that one of the blocks that builds, you know, our protective?
The layer.
We can't remove, we can't remove contact tracing.
You don't, you're not.
Well, I mean, yeah, you can, but I mean, is that, is that a, a road you want to go down in terms of controlling, you know, outbreaks and things like that? I, I don't know, I know.
I'm just saying that if you talk with them, since I talk with them all the time, that if you left the mask mandates, the vaccines, you know, then they would say, then if we only really had to deal with the ones that tested positive or showed symptoms, their life would be much easier and more kids would be in school. Because I think the kids that have to leave as a close contact and nothing ever comes of it, they're the ones that, you know.
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, that.
Well, only if they're not vaccinated though.
So my point is that soon that'll change, yeah.
Right, right.
Once they're fully vaccinated, then they won't have to leave school anymore.
Right, but if we move, this is from Lauren, thank you for, I'm, I'm sharing this. If we move to masking as being recommended, we would no longer be able to use the exception.
Right, because it's.
So students who are within six feet instead of three, which is our issue with space right now, um, they're considered close contacts and would be required to quarantine if they're not vaccinated.
Right.
So there would be an increase identified as close contacts because of the distance issue and no mask.
Right, that's why I said they would rather, at least at this point, keep the mask with the vaccination and then only have to, if you only tested positive or you showed symptoms. But that's a whole discussion for down the road.
Well, who, who here is ready to make a decision tonight? And who feels like they need additional information or data from this alternative survey that we're thinking about sending out? Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm just going to go with the consensus if I can. Because I don't want, I don't want to force someone to be voting, they feel better, they wait a week. I want, I think we got to stick together. I think it's really important.
Nobody wants to make a decision.
Well.
No, it's hard.
But unfortunately, I don't want to sit there and then leave someone dangling out there because I think that's the worst thing we can do.
Well, I, I, having been the person dangling out there a lot, I'm, it's okay. I mean, we have to vote for, in a way that reflects what we're hearing. And, and the, and the comments and the calls, that is our responsibility, that's our job. It's not to vote in a pack. So I, you know, when I vote, I represent a number of people, not my, maybe myself if I feel that way, but not necessarily. So I think that that's important that we're, I was told always vote from our.
Absolutely.
My conscience or my, and, and not go away from that, so.
Or the lie.
Yeah, um, so I just want to say that, that don't.
Consensus is nice, but it's not always possible.
No, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned on the date. So I, I guess a little bit more clarity on when this would happen would help me a lot. And I probably, I mean, I think that, I think I agree with all, we, we do have a lot of consensus on a number of things, but for me, that when it happens is critical.
Are you talking about, so are we, are we talking about just the high school right now or are we talking about all the schools? Because like when I look at his meeting minutes and the, the motion that he suggested, it was just on the high school. Or are we, are we discussing, are we discussing making a motion on all of the schools?
I, I thought you said that the other schools, we could wait until.
Mid-January.
And then I'm, I'm going with that also.
I just want to be clear on what we're.
That's why the date should have.
Doesn't have anything to do with the other three schools. I mean, in terms.
And.
When I originally wrote it, it did, but what I'm telling you tonight is that I think one thing to give more time for some is, I think high schools had plenty of time, if you, if you wanted to get vaccinated, you've had plenty of time to be vaccinated for all kids nine through twelve. So that now when the mask mandate is over, if you're going to let a group go to mask strongly encouraged and recommended, that would be a group you could start with. The rest of them, not all of them have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. Then I think if you waited until mid-January, beginning of second semester, then everybody in those schools would have the opportunity to have been vaccinated. You will have been, got through the two holiday periods. And then you can make a decision from what you've seen in the high school on what, on what you would like to do with those schools. And we can decide that at that time. They don't have to be decided now.
Okay. So if you're asking my opinion on that, Craig, I can support that. What I'm going to say again, in nineteen fifty-four, when Brown versus Board of Education, Supreme Court Chief Justice wanted to have that a unanimous case. And he was thinking, if I leave that room eight to one, you're going to tell people in this society, there's all reason why we don't have to support integration. And so as much as I, I represent everyone in this district, I'm representing, I want to do what's best for this district. And so that's, that's why I feel the way I do. I'm ready to support that, but I certainly don't want to make my colleagues feel like, oh, gosh, I got to vote for something I don't feel comfortable with. As long as we feel good.
You don't control, yeah. I think so.
That's good.
And, and you don't control our feelings. We, if, if we vote on our conscience, we, we, we live with that, so. I, I appreciate your sensitivity to that, but it's, it's, yeah. We might not get to a consensus and that's okay.
Should, um, I'm, I'm just trying to think how to, how to make this motion so that maybe in addition to what's there, we could put, uh, Indian Mountain Middle School, what be said, intermediate and Conrad Albium will remain masked until, uh, at the beginning of the second semester.
Well, remember, you're going to look at it every month. You can, it stays what, right now it stays masked. You have masks in what you originally.
Yeah, the only change would be to the high school.
You can make a motion that's just for the high school and then at the appropriate time.
The rest will remain unchanged.
That's correct, at the appropriate time. Then you can bring up the other schools. I'm suggesting that an appropriate time might be then at the beginning of second semester.
What is the date on that?
January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-fourth, you say?
Yeah, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two is first day of second semester.
Thank you.
So whatever the board meeting is closest to.
That's January seventeenth is the closest board meeting to that. And that would give us, we'd be able to kind of see how the high school did. We'd be able to see what happened after the holidays. So that, that would be the closest meeting to second semester.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead. I will move to go to a mask optional policy.
Mask strongly encouraged.
Strongly encouraged and recommended policy at McFarland High School on Monday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, so that the high school staff and students who have been vaccinated can determine whether or not they would like to wear a mask. Unvaccinated individuals would still be required to wear masks while inside the buildings.
Is that how you want to say it? Still be required or strongly encouraged?
Well, they're, they are required, it's just that we are not going to.
Okay, 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 that's fine.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Wait, I didn't vote.
You didn't vote?
I didn't vote. I didn't vote, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, you moved really quickly, Greg.
You did go quick.
Thank you. I was going to even discuss the date for a minute, and then you moved forward.
No, 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 no. We can back up. I didn't go too fast. You go ahead, Christine.
No, I'm just doing the date in my head and the math in my head.
Yeah.
Once again, my goal is to keep everyone in school, everyone's well.
Yeah.
And throwing me off are gatherings, holiday gatherings, honestly. I would probably be more comfortable with early January, but...
Early January for the high school?
Mm-hmm, like, the first day we get back, the second.
Then you're going to have a whole holiday break in there, like winter break.
But again, you would know what happened with Thanksgiving. That was my original thought about waiting a little bit too, but I can go with either one of these, so.
So, so we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, at this point.
And we're discussing, no, oh, oh, right, yeah.
Right? So we're, we're at aye still.
Well, you could do a roll call vote, so that there's no...
Well, I...
We all know who did it. It's clear.
Okay, so you're prepared to vote now?
I am.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four one. You tricked me.
No, I didn't. I was very clear that I'm concerned about the date.
Yeah, I was very clear I was going to wait. We have a consensus.
I would prefer that we get through the holidays, and I've made that clear, but I, I also respect when a vote is made and the board makes a decision, that is what we live with, and so...
That has served us well in the past, and I think it will continue to serve us well moving forward. So, moving on, next is...
Job description.
Action on second reading and adoption of policy 1230, responsibilities of the district administrator. So that would be the job description.
Right, this we talked about earlier, so if this now reads the way you want it, and you approve it, then I'll put it on. If you think it needs to change, then I need to make the change.
What are we thinking?
Are we discussing now?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a second one.
So first of all, I know that I read all the survey results. Thank you so much for doing this. This was a ton of work, and I realize that.
It's really helpful.
It was really great to hear, yeah. So I'd like to bring up the responsibilities in that, you know, there are a number of different areas that the person, the superintendent, will be doing, but there's none that is specifically focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, yet it is one that was mentioned by the community a lot, and staff as well. And the reason why I think it's important for it to be in there is that, one, I don't think it's fair to, I mean, if we're going to have this person, we've already talked about it being a pillar, and we've talked about the potential of adding a budget item to have a DEI coordinator or something like that, if this person is supervising that work, along with the work of others, like, you know, Director of Teaching and Learning and, and other roles like that, I feel like it's only fair to be very clear about that as a job responsibility, and it's not in here. And I also think that it's something that we will be evaluating them again, so I'm just wondering if we could add that.
And, and I think, just based on, on my feel for the staff and the community reaction to the survey is that I think it's important.
Because all the...
Staff and community are concerned about the equity initiative. I think it would be a disservice to the information that we've, that we've gleaned from these surveys to not include the equity piece in a, in a more, I don't know, singular way, make it separate kind of from the rest of it, yet have it in the job description.
Right, because there's, it's not in there at all.
No, I know.
I, I guess, I, I couldn't agree with what you're saying more, but I think it is there under operations letter H. Ensure that the policies and procedures are established for students' rights, responsibilities, and discipline. I think we could add something to that, but I think in a way, that speaks to it pretty strongly. I don't know, I mean, and this is where I think in some ways your expertise is, is really important, Christine.
Well, I think, yeah, because, I mean, it's broader than students, because the district is a working environment for staff.
Sure, sure.
And a learning environment for students. So there's nothing about, for example, I had done a couple of bullets, which, once again, I was not wed to, and all of you could have ripped them apart, but the ideas that I felt like were important was hiring a staff that are representative, we hear this repeatedly, we hear it from staff, providing a district that's free from climate, that's safe for learning and working, ongoing professional development, making sure the curriculum, we, we actually put, we actually passed that in our resolution last year, but there's nothing in the job description that says they have to do it.
Well, just, I mean, being a person who's had to abide by all of these things for a number of years, there actually are, when you look at the purpose of the job, the first, first of all, the administration of the schools in all aspects should be delegated district commissioners, means the individual's in charge of everything that goes on in the school. Irregardless of what it is, the individual's the person in charge, it's where the buck stops, and then I, then that person answers to you. So, you know...
That sounds like other duties as assigned, kind of.
It is, I mean, the superintendent, district minister is, is in charge of all, and that's the purpose of the job. You have to go down two more. The district minister is responsible for executing all policies, decisions, and orders. Equity, I mean, there are enough things that irregardless, I mean, I'm not saying you can't put in something specific to equity, but, I mean, anyone who takes the jobs as a superintendent is going to realize that you're going to pass. Even when you pass your strategic plan, that's the policy, that's what they're going to do. When, when the equity pillar's part of it, that person knows that there's their responsibility, so...
But it's implied, and I think if we want people to apply and to make sure that it's something that they are skilled at and are willing to do, I think we need to be clear about it. I, I don't think implying is good enough anymore for us with our data. We have enough evidence to show that we need to do things differently, and I think it's unclear. And I would just, once again, I don't think it's fair to anybody applying or hired when we say, oh, yeah, by the way, there's this whole other area that you really need to work on. Everything else that the, the, the survey uncovered are things that you can clearly see in here, but not that piece. So I just, it's just, to me, kind of a gaping hole.
The one I would suggest, if we want to put something in equity, and so we don't delay it for, you know, the next meeting, that you pass the job description with the inclusion of an equity section that basically, I will write in some way, and I will send it out and massage it, and then when it says, yep, that, it looks like you hit it, then I'll put that one in. I don't know how I'll write that yet, but I will when I start coming back tomorrow.
Right, and I think just making it consistent with the other ones, as general...
The format will be the same.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
I have a problem only if we start boxed it in too much. I mean, I, I have your proposals written down, and the number five, seek to hire staff that are representative of our students, community, state, country, and world. I, in all my years, we did everything we could. I don't think it's because we were discriminating against people. In fact, we still tend to lose people of color. And I've asked myself, is that because of us, or is it because of, in some ways, the nature of, if I was a, a, a teacher of color, and I would ask myself, where could I do the most good? Because I think that's what teachers are doing. I would ask myself, would it be in McFarland, or would it be in Madison? And I, and, and I don't think it's, it's something that, that we, we need to be kind of beating ourselves. I think we all would like to do that. Now, I think there have been things that have been said, there were statements, I think you could work that, rather than getting, I just don't want to get too boxed in, we, we got to make clear that we are interested in a diverse curriculum, we're interested in diverse staff, you know? And it's, this school has changed so dramatically, I've seen, in the seven years since I've retired. It's something we've got to work on, this has got to be part of it, but I don't want to get us boxed in too much. I kind of like the Constitution, I kind of like the, the, you know, the elastic clause, let it kind of stretch and whatever. I know you're, you're thinking that we're implied, and I...
Well, I would write this section to be general enough, so that people knew that equity was a focus of the district.
Yes.
But not so stringent that it, you know, that would box you in. Like you said, I don't know what that will look like yet, but I will try to make it so it looks similar to these in, you know, laying out the expectation, but not saying, you know, not being so detail oriented then.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to make a motion to approve, to go with this particular, I'm sorry. I make a motion to adopt policy 1230, responsibilities of the district administrator with the inclusion of an...
Equity section.
Equity-centered area that's written consistent with the rest of the job, so it's not too boxed in that, that people are aware of it. That's my motion.
One second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously five zero.
And I'll send that out as I, when I do have it constructed, I will send it out until, and I won't include it in this until it has consensus.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Action on recommended WEVA, Destination Career Academy, and Insight Wisconsin, Wisconsin statute 118 dot four zero eight G, student transfer to resident districts.
Right, this is an easy one. This is if they don't basically come to school, they're not doing it, we send them back.
Yep. Yeah, this is kind of an annual or even biannual thing.
And I do have a recommended motion at the end of McFarland minutes?
I move, I move to recommend the presented students return to their home districts from WEVA DCA ISWI, as allowed under the Wisconsin statute 118 point four zero eight G.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously five zero. I would accept in a motion for adjournment.
I move adjourned.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Great job tonight, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.